Good evening. Welcome to the June 18th meeting of the Everett Planning Commission. Ayana, would you please call the roll?
Chair Chatters.
Here.
Commissioner Adkins.
Here.
Commissioner Ballard.
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Here.
Commissioner Shelby.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Adkins, would you read the land acknowledgement?
Yes. The Planning Commission wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Snohomish people, and their successors, the Talalip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you, Commissioner Adkins. I believe we have the same issue that we had last meeting with regard to the minutes, actually. I think we will need to hold those and revisit at our next meeting.
Quorum five.
No, no.
Five to seven.
Are we good?
Because it's of the regular members, not of the regulars plus alternates.
Alternate. We have four.
Is the full commission seven? Plus two alternates, six nine, I think.
I think that's usually the number.
Okay. If we're in... Charles, you're the numbers guy. You tell me.
I'm going to go look at the bylaws right now.
Yeah, yeah. Let's take a quick look.
Maybe we could...
Commissioner Sullivan, you were absent at the last meeting, so that was why. So with the addition of Commissioner Sullivan, then I think maybe you're right. You're... Yeah. Charles will double-check for us.
Though, we might want to just do reports?
Yeah. Let's deal with any changes to the meeting minutes while you look that up. Commissioners, any changes to the meeting minutes? And we all had an opportunity to review them. So for the meeting minutes for June 18th, I did have one change, Ayana. It is the last page, third paragraph down, where it reads, "Chair Chatters wondered if it would be possible to extend design regulations that apply to smaller parcels and apply them to larger parcels as well." It was the opposite of that. I was asking if it was possible to take the existing regulations on the larger parcels and apply those to the smaller parcels.
And quorum is four members. And as long as an alternate is serving as a regular member due to the absence of other members, they also constitute part of that quorum.
Excellent. Thank you. Then, we are actually in a position where we can approve not just the meeting minutes from June 18th, but we also have meeting minutes from the prior meeting, which you all would have reviewed as well. And I understand there were no changes recommended from those prior meeting minutes. So without objection... Did I see objection in your eyes, Commissioner Sullivan? Okay. Without objection, then the minutes are approved. And commissioners, any reports today? Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes. This is kind of... I was talking to... Oh, this seems really loud. I was talking to some neighbors, and it wasn't necessarily a specific question that we were discussing when we were talking about the different alternatives, but what happens if we build too much housing? I think I understand how that works from like a the price goes down situation, but I don't think I know what other things would be impacted from your perspective and the city itself if we have too much housing. Because we were talking about, well, why should we build so much housing outside of the deficit? What if we don't end up having the deficit of housing? So that's what had come up.
Additional reports, commissioners? Well, of course, tomorrow is Juneteenth, so hopefully everyone will take an opportunity to reflect on Juneteenth and the wonderful holiday that now it's an official holiday. It's a really good opportunity to just reflect on where we've been and where we have come to, and also to look forward to the future of where we're going. So with that, we'll turn it over to staff for comments.
Thank you. Good evening. York Stevens Watch, the planning director, joined by Karen Stewart, environmental planner this evening. Alice Anne is viewing valleys at the Valley View Neighborhood Association, continuing our outreach and engagement push in May and June. I think we've visited now more than half of the neighborhood associations in the city and a couple more to go. We're with the Council of Neighborhoods yesterday evening. We've had some great conversations with folks. We're having a two comprehensive plan expos. Part of the tour of neighborhood associations is to build awareness of the comprehensive plan and also of these expos, which are an opportunity to have some one-on-one conversations with staff from the planning department, Public Works, Everett Transit, Community Transit, Sound Transit. Transit folks love a good open house. I think Parks and City Parks is going to be there. So some of the cast that is outside of planning that has a role in the comprehensive plan will be making some presentations and be available for questions and discussion with the public. Those are on June 28th and 29th, and I think that'll kind of wrap up the core of this two-month surge of outreach and visits. June 28th is at the Everett Station Warehouse Room. June 29th is at the Evergreen Branch Library. I can't remember exactly the time, so I won't risk giving the wrong times unless Karen remembers. It's on our website, everettwad.gov/2044, which has a new story map for folks who haven't seen it this spring. It's the second edition of an interactive map that goes through the alternatives and some of the concepts behind them. Really good information for folks looking to learn more about the comprehensive plan and, of course, has information about where we will be for outreach activities. I think that's it for... Oh, the Park District made it to the council, so no more delays on that. Went to the council last week on Wednesday for a briefing with Everett Housing Authority and the consultant team there. Got some good questions from the council, a few public comments. We're holding public hearings on June 26th and July 10th, the next two council meetings. The council is off tomorrow for Juneteenth and then off on July 3rd for Independence Day. So those two are formal public hearings. Notice is out and encourage folks to take a look at the project. There's a website for that project as well. And pass along any comments, questions you have to planning staff or directly to the city council. I think that's it for today.
Thank you. We now have an opportunity for public comment. To those of you joining us remotely, please mute your microphone, or if you are calling in, mute your phone by pressing star six at each opportunity for public comment. I will ask if anyone wants to speak. If you are participating remotely and would like to provide comment, unmute your microphone or press star six on your phone. Please provide your name for the record, and when you're done, please mute again. Doesn't look like we have anyone in the gallery who wishes to comment. Ayana, do we have anyone online who wants to comment?
No comments.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we will now move on to agenda item number four, Metro Everett Ground Floor Birthing Centers.
Okay. So this is a council request. I believe this is the first one since I've been here at least that was a... The council has a process by which a motion and a second, they can ask the city attorney to draft legislation. City attorney in turn asks planning staff for some support on that, and land use legislation comes through the Planning Commission as part of its process for a recommendation. So we're here to present a relatively tailored and specific amendment that was requested by the council regarding, as the title says, birthing centers on the ground floor in Metro Everett. Today's going to be a briefing, and we'll be back next month for a recommendation from you. So just think about what questions you might have, what more information would help you come to a decision on that. So currently, a birthing center, which is a place where... Oh, deuce. A place where you go for prenatal care and giving birth as well. Currently, we... There's a definition for it, and it's on the next slide. I'm not going to try to remember it, so we'll get there. But a birthing center currently is regulated under clinics. Our definition of clinic is a building or a portion of a building designed and used for the medical, dental, or surgical diagnosis or treatment of patients under the care of doctors. And if there's not a specific use that is exactly what you're looking for, planning staff look to the closest description of that use or the use that most closely matches the description. In this case, clinics is that one. Clinics are allowed in a couple of zones, as you can see on the screen there, with a couple of different approval routes. P is permitted. A is an administrative use permit in which it's an administrative decision that can include conditions, and it can also be denied based on specific criteria. And then you see the special regulations, which are the footnotes that apply to different zones, or relatively complicated set of regulations for the clinic use. In Metro Everett, which is what is at in question here, on a certain set of designated streets, clinics are prohibited on the ground floor. And there's a list of exceptions, which are dentists, psychiatrists, chiropractors, physical therapists, optometrists, and ophthalmologists. So those subsets of clinics are allowed on the ground floor, and others must go to the second floor or above, or to a different street. Where are these TOD, Transit-Oriented Development and Pedestrian Streets, in Metro Everett? You can see them on this map here in purple and red. So it's much of the downtown core. It's all of Pacific. It's all of Broadway and a few other streets there. You can... It's a little bit hard to see the Metro Everett, but do take note of the orange line, which is the boundary of Metro Everett. So TOD and pedestrian streets outside of Metro Everett do not have that specific restriction. The proposal, pretty tailored, pretty simple, would add a definition for birthing center, a health facility not part of a hospital or in a hospital that provides facilities and staff to support a birth service to low-risk maternity clients. That definition is out of state law, which licenses birthing centers, so just borrowed that definition. And then we would add that to the list of subtypes that would not be considered clinics for the purpose of this restriction. We have review criteria in Title 15 for code amendments, and those include consistency with the comprehensive plan, a substantial relation to public health, safety, or welfare, and promotes the best long-term interests of the Everett community. The second two, I think, are relatively subjective. The first one in the proposed ordinance that... I don't think I attached that to the... I didn't attach the proposed ordinance to the agenda packet, but the relevant policies are in the agenda memo on page three. And those include... So I went through the entire existing comprehensive plan and looked for policies that could relate to this proposal one way or the other. And we have a couple of policies about downtown and about activity on the street, which I understand is the source of the restriction on clinics from the ground floor. It's to support an active streetscape, lots of comings and goings and clustering of retail and other businesses that can have a synergy between them. Policy in the land use element, 2.4.1, encourage redevelopment of Everett's metropolitan center with an intensive mix of governmental, financial, and professional services, cultural activities, high-density housing, appropriate industrial uses, and retail and service businesses in a compact pedestrian and transit-oriented downtown setting. There's a goal in the urban design element. Downtown Everett should be the cultural center of the city with a rich concentration of commercial enterprises, civic uses, historic structures, residential development, and public spaces. There's an objective in urban design to strengthen the retail base by concentrating shops and services in selected areas. And then policy UD 8.6.1, consider amendments to the city's land use code as necessary to improve standards that reinforce pedestrian-friendly development in downtown, especially in areas designated as retail streets. I believe there have been two downtown plans, at least in recent times. There was the Everett Downtown Plan and then Metro Everett. I believe in the Everett Downtown Plan, there were some streets, Hewitt and Colby probably, that were designated as retail streets. That, as a specific designation, is no longer, but I think you could consider it equivalent to the TOD or pedestrian streets, although maybe not a full focus on retail. So those were some relevant policies that we would look to for consistency here. And there was one more piece I wanted to touch on. Here we go. So what I've got for recitals for the ordinance, for the rationale for it, which connect a little bit to the consistency with the comprehensive plan. And I've got the limits on ground floor uses on certain designated streets are intended to promote pedestrian orientation through enhanced street-level activity and visual interest, and to promote clustering of and synergy in retail services and other businesses that benefit from or depend on spontaneous visits from strolling customers. And that birthing centers provide an important service and can be supportive of active and vibrant streets that are busy with people, provide inviting ground floor spaces, and focus on retail, commercial, and business uses. Oh, I get it. It's the streets that focus on retail, commercial, and business uses. Those were... Those arguments in favor were prepared after a review of Metro Everett, our existing comprehensive plan, and some of the supporting documentation, including the previous downtown plan. So I think that's what I've got for this one.
I feel it coming, Commissioner Sullivan.
Well, I'm just trying to make sure I understand. Currently, you could not have a birthing center on the first floor. This would change that?
Correct. Yes.
Based on what the step... Okay. That's it. That's great.
So there's a lot of exceptions. Birthing centers, dentists, psychiatrists, chiropractors, physical therapists, optometrists, ophthalmologists. I mean, I'm certainly in favor of allowing birthing centers. My question, though, is what are we trying to prevent here? Because it seems like there's a specific thing that's trying to be prevented that's not being articulated. And so what is the goal of preventing clinics on the street level?
My understanding from a review of three ordinances that wound up with the present restriction on clinics is that in 2003, about, there was a concern about drug and alcohol treatment facilities locating downtown, or maybe it was elsewhere as well. There was a moratorium on such facilities. There was some work done, and then a prohibition, I believe, on those facilities, followed by some legal analysis that brought some concern about singling out that use and its connection to American with Disabilities Act, I believe. Then it was pulled back from only focusing on drug and alcohol treatments to clinics in general. So the wider net then brought in some other uses. And then I think some of those exceptions were added, and I'm not sure if they were added all at once or if it was piecemeal. I believe it was all at once, perhaps with rethink zoning. Since then, though, I think there remains a focus on downtown's health and recovery from the pandemic and a real desire to keep the critical mass of active uses on the ground floor of some of these streets. And I think it's... There are some clinic and medical-type uses that are not a great fit for that, and there are some that may be. So I think that's kind of how we got where we are. Some council members have had questions about these... I've had questions myself about these ground floor use restrictions. I went to, I believe it was the Parks Quality and Life Committee. It was one of the council committees about a year ago to talk with them. There's this commercial... There's a whole other list, social services and others that are prohibited on the ground floor in Metro Everett that go beyond clinics. There's also some limitations on residential use on the ground floor. On TOD streets, residential use may only make up 25% of a block face. And so that's something, I think, that we're looking at. All of this is fair game for the comprehensive plan update to look at. It is something that's been reviewed, I think, multiple times since these ordinances, rethink zoning, Metro Everett, is how we've arrived where we're at.
Any additional questions, commissioners?
Not just this ground floor topic, but you said there are other things adjacent to this that are fair game. Kind of... All right. Like, I'm... Man. The 25%.
Yeah.
For example, that was just one thing that you've mentioned. It kind of comes up. I could see why. I could see why not. Are that category of items... Are we going to go into some more of those at some point? Because it sounds like you said fair game, which makes me think, well, maybe we should be reviewing those.
Yeah. I think part of that statement is that I wouldn't take this as the opportunity to look at...
Totally fine.
...the constellation of ground floor uses downtown. The periodic update is a natural fit, although it's competing with a whole lot of other things that we're reviewing at the same time. Maybe it's the right time for it. Maybe that's an action to complete in the coming years. The 25% of residential on the ground floor, I think, needs a fix one way or the other. I tend to think that residential is okay in terms of activating streets. Maybe there's some that we don't want it, but some that we do. The problem is by only restricting residential, you can wind up with blank walls, concrete walls for a surface, well, above-ground structured garage, which is what we've seen in a few developments on Pacific Street. And I think that obviously is not what the intent was. That's not better than residential for ground floor. So I would want to at least fix that by flipping it to active uses or something instead of just prohibiting residential. So that's one that we have in our tracker, our code issues tracker, to address. The rest of them, yeah, this is something that we would want to involve Downtown Everett Association, of course, the council, and the mayor. And I just... Downtown is a jewel and something that takes a lot of care to keep going healthy.
I think that the city is right to be concerned that a targeted restriction is a violation of the ADA. And this was 2003. It's 2024. And with the number of folks in the community who have struggled with addiction issues and have gone through recovery processes, who we are gathering back into our communities and trying to remove these kinds of unfair and unfounded stigmas around folks who have been through this recovery process, I'm excited that we will have an opportunity to look at this and to have further discussion. So I agree that this is not necessarily the time for us to tackle it, but I think this is an issue that we need to have flagged so we can revisit it because there's a lot of concern around it. Additional comments, questions? Okay.
So we'd expect to bring this back with a resolution drafted for you. I already have the ordinance drafted, so the resolution will probably lift some language from that. And we'll ask for a recommendation from the commission at the July... At your third Tuesday in July meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to agenda item number five, and that is the Everett 2044 Comp Plan, Climate Change and Resiliency.
We've got one more before that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a 2044 Phase...
Oh.
That is a Phase Four work program.
Okay. Phase blank. 2044 Phase Blank Program. That's intriguing. Let's do that first.
Apparently, we mailed out the agenda. I mailed out or sent the agenda to be mailed out before going back to see which phase exactly this was talking about. Phase Three is draft environmental impact statement. We're wrapping up that phase. And Phase Four focuses on the plan elements, the goals, policies, visions, and everything that's... They're kind of bringing it all together into a complete plan document. Phase Five is the actual adoption process, which I think includes the final recommendation from the Planning Commission and the city council. Phase Four is what we'll be doing for the rest of 2024, rest of this year. We can count, I think it was 11 meetings, that we have on the Planning Commission's calendar for the rest of the year. We have a goal of getting to a complete plan document and receiving a recommendation from the Planning Commission by the end of the year, and then giving it to the city council for their review in early 2025. So what we wanted to do today is walk through a proposed schedule for consideration of the elements in the comprehensive plan. And this pairs with... I gave you a couple of handouts, and we'll make sure that these get posted on the Planning Commission page as well, but I've got the slides with the same information. So the two that we'll be looking at with this item look like this. And they include a vision and element scope for each of the elements, as well as a calendar of when we would bring those elements over the rest of 2024. So Alice Anne has done quite a bit of work in her first month and a little bit on the comprehensive plan already, dived right in. And one of the pieces of work, maybe she mentioned it the last... Our last meeting a couple of weeks ago, maybe not. I can't remember. We've been in lots of meetings together. I think it was with the city council's Built Environment Committee last Wednesday, actually. So Alice Anne has gone through a list of sources of vision statements that are already on the books. So we have our existing comprehensive plan, and I'll just read through this partial list of sources that Alice Anne read through, every single one of them, and then tried to distill the city's vision as it exists on paper into vision statements for each of these proposed elements. It included the Everett City Council's mission statement, the Mayor Franklin's State of the City vision from 2019, One Everett, envision Everett 2037, Everett 2000, vision goals and actions, the Everett Comprehensive Plan, the Everett Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, the Everett Climate Action Plan, the Everett 2022-2025 Economic Development Vision, an Everett Police, perhaps, Strategic Plan, Puget Sound Regional Council Vision 2050, Snohomish County 2020 Vision for the Future, Snohomish PUD, Port of Everett, U.S. Navy and Naval... And U.S. Naval Station Everett planning documents. So this resulted in a list of vision statements and scopes to organize these elements. I want to flag that these are different titles, and there are more of them now than we have been talking about. So I think we have stuck fairly closely to our existing comprehensive plan element structure, which itself is based on the required elements in state law, land use, housing, economic development, and so on. Everett has an urban design element that is not on that list, so every city, county is free to make up their own structure that makes sense for them, just as long as the relevant parts of state law are handled. So it doesn't have to be called housing, as long as you've checked all the boxes for state-level requirements for housing. So we've got 11 elements that came out of that piece of work. Yeah, and it's kind of... Yeah, I'll jump to this one. Alice Anne was thinking to start with the calendar and then go back, but I... You wouldn't know what these elements are until we go through this piece here. So why don't we start by going through each one of these proposed... here. So why don't we start by going through each one of these proposed elements, and on the left side is a vision statement, which is an overarching kind of a goal vision where we're going. And then on the right side is the scope, which is what is handled in this element. Everett 2044, that's the whole comprehensive plan, and so a proposed overarching vision statement would be that Everett is a vibrant, diverse, sustainable community that honors its coast-salish peoples and industrial legacies while thriving in a knowledge-based economy. Urban Form, this would most closely match the artist formerly known as Land Use element. And the, it would be about how the city decides where to permit different land uses. So I think it's like the zoning map, the land use map, what can go where. It is more than land use, which is, I think, some of what Alice Anne was touching on. Land use is what you can do where, but it doesn't necessarily connect to building forms and structures, and so that's the other half of what becomes urban form. And the proposed vision statement there is that Everett is a walkable, livable, and safe city, or, oh, Everett is, Everett is walkable, livable, and safe, and plans for and encourages development downtown and along its transportation corridors. See a little typo there. Housing Element, Everett meets the housing needs for its growing diverse community. Transportation Element, people and goods move easily, efficiently, and safely within and through Everett. Public Facilities and Services, Everett has sustainable and resilient public facilities and services. Economic Development, a thriving, connected, and sustainable economy that lifts Everett residents and businesses. Design and Development is kind of a successor to our existing urban design element, but also brings in the historic preservation element, which I think actually is how we have it now, urban design and historic preservation. And the proposed vision statement for that is Everett's neighborhoods are inviting attractive and functional for all people. Parks and Recreation, Everett has an inviting, high-quality parks, facilities, and open spaces that are well-managed and embrace innovation, partnerships, sustainability, adaptability, and equity in meeting the needs of the community. Marine Port Element, the Port of Everett is an economic engine providing coastal access, recreation opportunities, while protecting the fragile coastline and cultural resources. The Everett Naval Station supports Navy and Coast Guard operations and is a welcoming home to all stationed there. Climate Change and Resiliency, the city of Everett is a leader in climate action and the green economy. We partner with communities and businesses to work toward carbon neutrality, sustain healthy, resilient, and livable communities, preserve the natural environment and a robust local economy, and enhance quality of life for all residents and generations to come. And then, this is a new one, Engagement, Administration, and Implementation. Everett engages all members of the community in meaningful conversations. Decisions are made in open, transparent meetings. And then Healthy Community, Everett is a caring community built on trust, inclusion, and equity. And Healthy Community would, I think, address public health as well as some of our community development work and human needs. So those are the proposed list of elements. So a lot of those are unchanged from what we've been working with, but there's a couple of new ideas in there that, that I like. I'm going to go back to the calendar, and then we can, oh, yes.
Yeah, this may seem like a silly question, but I'm going to ask it anyways. Under the transportation element scope, I see mention of how people and goods get around the city by all modes, including walking and rolling cars, buses, rail, and trucks. If we wanted to tackle, like, just to talk about kayak launches, would that fit under the marine element or the transportation element?
I would think Parks and Rec, assuming that most kayaking is done for recreation purposes. I think, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I just was, the, the word rolling in particular
Right.
made me ask of, or just had it come up in my mind of, like, what about kayaks or rowboats or?
That would be a fantastic way to get to work, and I hope that for myself and all of us at some point in our
I've heard of this guy, like, kayaks from South Whidbe to downtown Everett.
Okay. Transportation element it goes, then, I guess. Where there's one, there can be more. Yeah, the rolling piece is, I think, in past years, decades, that would have been cycling or bicycling. That's different ways to roll are proliferating. So that's why it's a little bit broader. Okay, so I would like to return to these, but let's go to the calendar first here. So this is Proposed Sequence. We have two meetings per month, Third and First, Tuesday of each month. I think I said earlier, we're going to be asking a lot of this commission for the balance of this year. There are a couple months, including July, where we don't have both meetings, and I think September is the other one. But here we are on July 16th, and we've got birthing centers, no, we're June 18th, Birthing Centers Work Program and Climate Change and Resiliency Element. One of the principles is to bring these elements to you twice. One to, for a briefing, get some questions, need for more information, we can go back and prepare that and come back to you. What we're looking for at the end of the second meeting is kind of consensus that we're on the right track. We're not going to take votes, we're not going to do resolutions on it, but we really have to keep rolling from one to the next one. So I think we're going to look for a head nod. And maybe there's some that are not quite as complete, not quite as appropriate for head nods, but at least that's our goal. So for climate change, we'll talk about it today, and then we'll come back in July, and hopefully we have a level of comfort that we're in the right place. And then you'll see in the winter, we'll, we'll do a Bringing It All Together series where we can look for interrelationships and all that. So in July, we will do the recommendation on birthing centers, we'll wrap up climate change, and we will start housing element. And then in August, notice that it pops down to the bottom left, we have a site-specific rezone application that's been received that we'll need to process through the Planning Commission. We will continue with the housing element, and we will begin the urban, urban forum element. And then in second meeting in August, we would continue with the urban forum element, and then start Design and Development and Historic Preservation.
On the, I think it's supposed to be August 20.
Okay, yep, thank you, you're right. Six plus, six plus 14.
How much do you want us to do?
I do not. September 17th, so the first Tuesday is, I think, the day after Labor Day. So we thought that folks might have vacation plans. If that's not the case, maybe, I'm sure we could fill that time. We can see how we're doing after August.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Vacation plans.
Okay, good. We thought as much. Maybe we'll go on vacation, too. So Design and Development, Historic Preservation would wrap up in September, and we would start the Economic Development and Marine Port Elements. And then to October 1st, we would start the Transportation Element and Healthy Community Element. I think it's Economic Development and Marine Port might be targeted enough to be able to be complete in one meeting, but all of this is subject to change and extension if we need more time with Economic Development, for instance. And then continue with Transportation. October seems like a good month to talk Transportation. It's when the rain is back, the kids are back in school, and traffic gets rough, so it's on top of mind. Parks Recreation and Open Space, which is, should not be, we just did a major update to that. It's now two years ago, but still, it's fairly fresh, so not expecting a whole lot of new work on Parks Rec and Open Space. Public Facilities and Services. And then in November, I guess we go back to introduction, and then we talk about Engagement, Administration, and Implementation, followed by two meetings to bring it all together. And maybe there's some leftovers from earlier meetings that we need to look at. And then December 17th, if we get there, we've got a final draft and a recommendation.
Would it be at all possible to move that November 5th meeting? I, I'm not going to be able to pay attention that day.
Yeah, having had to go through the experience
Yes.
last round, it would be a kindness to move that.
Okay, well, I will take that back.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just gonna, if we hold it that day, I'm just gonna be on my phone the entire time, just.
Yeah.
Doesn't nothing happen till 8:00 PM on that certain day? Here in Washington, we get tons of East Coast results.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 that's right. Yeah, 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 okay. Yeah, I think we have some, we have some float. And again, if this, if this goes into January, I think I've been saying I'd rather get this right than quite on time. So that's in general. It's a full schedule. And I'll say, these last three meetings, having meetings two weeks apart, is, is really tough. So I guess wish us all luck on getting adequately prepared and responding and everything. But this is the, this is the time to get it done. Okay, so back to maybe just a little bit of time on the, on the vision statements, and if there's any thoughts on the proposed structure here, or any of the vision statements, not looking for concurrence on these, I think actually we'll bring them. The climate change one would be a good one to focus on today, but otherwise, if you have thoughts on them, we'll, we'll take them. This is obviously a, a first rough draft. There's a couple typos in there show you how recent of a development this is. But yeah, any thoughts on, on this structure? And it's, it's new to you, so take your handouts home, and we'll post those online, and you can think about it a little bit more, with more time.
Is there a particular reason why Design and Development and Urban Form are separate? It just strikes me that those, there's a lot of overlap there.
Yeah. We do it like that now. So we have a land use element, and we have an urban design element, and it's kind of big and details, big picture and details, I think. That probably went into the thinking. I can, I will say categorization is so, so hard. We did some work on that today, and we'll share it with you in the climate element. Does this policy about reducing vehicle miles traveled belong for climate purposes, belong in the climate chapter or the transportation chapter? We try to think about who's going to be using the element and for what purposes. I think we'll, these will wind up at least next to each other, so probably not separated by all those other elements. Ultimately, it'll be urban form and then Design and Development. It, it's, it's our choice, and I, I don't have a window into why we went that direction years ago. Maybe Alice Anne had some thoughts, too. I'll, I'll check with her. Maybe it was just a continuation of what we had. We talked a lot about design in middle housing, and having that all in one place does seem helpful. It could also be a subsection of the urban form element and achieve that same kind of organization.
And, and sorry to ask more questions, but it also strikes me that Marine Port and Transportation could be, one, especially looking at the vision for Transportation, people and goods move easily, efficiently, and safely within and through Everett, and it's kind of what the port does.
It really is, yeah. Marine Port has, was rooted in a state grant program, and it was added as an optional element in, I don't know, 2005 or so, somewhere around there. And there was a grant program, and we developed a brand-new Marine Port element at that time with the Commerce Grant. We have asked the port and Naval Station Everett to take a look at it for just a refresh of, like, existing conditions, not necessarily any policy changes, but just things like Norton Terminal expansion is complete, and so reflecting that. But I think you're, both of those are good points that we could take a look at.
I would kind of echo the, back to the housing and design. I think those should be really talked about at the same time. I mean, I think they're in silos separately. You could accidentally counteract the good you did in one based on emphasizing the other. So I think they really should be one.
I'm actually a little hesitant to combine the marine and transportation. I, I think of some of these things that, like, Everett kind of owns, is maybe a generous word, whereas we don't really own the port. So, I mean, if, we feel totally different, by all means, but I'm, I'm not going to be the first one to jump on that.
I, maybe renaming it, like, the waterfront element? I, I think that would be, I, I just think it's, it feels redundant of that transportation vision, Evan specifically outlining the port later on. It feels like if we are talking about transportation, that we should be, like, I, I imagine those, the previous conversations the port has talked about around the importance of roads and being able to transport stuff from the port throughout the city, that, like, that stuff seems like it would fit very much so within the, the transportation element. But I do think that there is validity to the idea of, like, having a waterfront-specific element, especially just because it, it feels so distinct from the rest of the city.
So a number of years ago, in 2018, 2019, the city updated, it's called the Shoreline Master Program, so that's for a waterfront area. That's a separate document, but technically it's an element of the comprehensive plan. It's just not bound within it. So that's where, and there's mention of kayaks, boating within that document.
So, yeah, I just forgot, that's probably an appropriate one to add to this list, just for visibility. It's updated on a separate cycle. The Shoreline Master Program guides and regulates development and uses within 200 feet of the ordinary high watermark. So it's just the real shoreline-facing strip, but then also our density fringe flood plain, including lots of Smith Island.
Right, the entire 100-year flood plain on
The whole flood, okay, yeah.
Smith Island, yeah. And a Shoreline Master Program is kind of like a comprehensive plan, so the policy basis combined with zoning. So the uses and what are called shoreline modifications are regulated through that document.
So another one to throw into the mix, but I, I appreciate all these comments. This is, this is good, good thinking. Hopefully, we will be able to demonstrate here in the next item on climate change, how we're trying to help clarify the, the relationships between elements, so that the organization is helpful to the reader, but does not isolate topics or be redundant, I guess. Okay.
I just want to, just put in a plug for what Charles and Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Atkins and Commissioner Ballard said about combining the design element with the urban form element. There's just so, and a lot of these are interconnected, so obviously this is a tough task in general. But those are so deeply interconnected that you can't functionally have those conversations separately. So, and then I, I agree with Commissioner Sullivan. I think it's difficult to, to take the marine port and combine it with transportation because there's so many unique elements to it. It includes our military, which is, that's a whole separate thing in and of itself. So I think there's a lot of validity to the idea of combining it with transportation, but I feel the same hesitancy that I think you do, Commissioner Sullivan, just wanting to think that through as to whether or not it should, it should really remain separate because it's so distinct.
I think the port itself may have an opinion on that, too. So we'll, we'll check with them, and I know they're already working on it, so there may be, since it's already in play, it may not be a good time to change course on that. But I appreciate the feedback, and we'll do some thinking, and we'll talk about this again at the next meeting.
Commissioner Shelby?
Thank you. I was going to mention, I think the port has a vote-up this election, or, or either in August or November, to expand the boundaries of the port, and therefore new port commissioners. Wow. Yeah, my gain is really high. New port commissioners, et cetera, and so it might be worthwhile to push that till later, when potentially a Newport commission has the opportunity to figure out what their vision is moving forward.
And let me clarify that, like, for me, my, I just, my suggestion came from just that, the vision of transportation, and I think I would be satisfied if we just clarified either the vision or maybe the element scope of, that these are land-based transportation. or maybe the element scope of that these are land-based transportation. Unless we're also covering air.
The transportation element would cover air. And if, if we didn't have a marine port element, it would cover the marine port as well. And just to clarify, I, I believe it only pertains to the container port. It is next door to Naval Station Everett, but does not plan for Naval Station Everett. And it also doesn't get into other port properties and their economic development that would be handled elsewhere. So just the real management of the container port itself, not container port, the cargo port, excuse me, some containers. So next we'll talk about climate change. Karen's going to walk through a couple of slides. And then we've got one of the, the other handout that I gave you in a Word document that we can walk through, proposed goals and policies.
Okay, thank you very much. So Karen Stewart, environmental planner. I'm also the staff person who worked with the consultant team back in 2018 and 2019 when we updated, or when we prepared our first ever climate action plan. So will you advance slides for me? So tonight's presentation, we will review and discuss the approach for updating goals and policies. And this is sort of a template that then we're using for all the different elements. And we'll explain some of the challenges that we've been discovering as we go through this. And then also updating this climate action plan, which had not been included in the last comprehensive plan, which was adopted in 2015. So we start out with a vision for the future. And I won't read this, but this is what Yorick, I think already probably read this evening from the sheet that contained all the different vision statements. And this is currently adopted, so we're just pulling them all together. And then the, this particular update for this element, I already mentioned the climate action plan. We need to align that with the, reflect that in our comprehensive plan. There's also an Everett Hazard Mitigation Plan that we've just updated, this, completed this year. So we'll, we need to reference that. Then there's the initiatives from the Mayoral Directive a number of years ago that need to be included in the comprehensive plan. And then there's state law changes, the RCW, I believe you were briefed on last fall. And then House Bill 1181 also needs to be reflected. So next slide. So this was a slide that was presented with your briefing last October, explaining now that certainly climate change is a much bigger issue than it was acknowledged to be in 2015 with our, with our update. And so the city of Everett actually was quite out ahead in 2015 to have an element dealing with climate change. So we're a little bit ahead of some of the other jurisdictions who have not ever addressed this in their comprehensive plan. And then, next slide. So with the additional state requirements of two different sub-elements addressing greenhouse gas emission reduction as well as resiliency. And you probably weren't briefed on resiliency last time. So I'm providing the definition that, that we're to follow. So, and I'll just read that first one. So climate resilience is the ability to anticipate, prepare for, and respond to hazardous events, trends, or disturbances related to climate, such as increased frequency and intensity of storms, flooding, wildfires, and extreme heat events. And going along with the climate resilience is climate adaptation, which will be actions to manage impacts of climate change. And then climate mitigation, which are actions to try to reduce climate change impacts. Next slide. So our proposed updates are addressing these items. So the first one, dealing with resiliency and creating a resilient community, putting together goals and policies related to that. And right from the outset, we're proposing to change the title of the element. So the element right now in our comprehensive plan uses the word sustainability. But because the state law now has been changed with an emphasis on resiliency, we figured might as well just change the, the title of the element. And then secondly, and we'll be talking a lot about that tonight, a little bit later, is that many of these topics really cross over to other elements in the comprehensive plan. And also with your memo that was in your packet, I believe, there was a attachment that referred to the climate action plan, goals and policies, and the various elements that need to be revised to implement that plan. A couple of things, if you're trying to think about, well, resiliency, what is that really in terms of climate resiliency strategies? The overall goal is to reduce negative impacts of climate change. And some of the actions that will be addressing would be flood and sea level rise protection, emergency preparedness, urban form for multimodal transportation, waste reduction, urban forestry, distributed renewable energy, energy efficiency. So, next slide.
So a question on the, was there a difference between resiliency and sustainability? That any definition or just, it's just an alignment of the term?
I think there is a difference, but somehow resiliency is the term that we're supposed to be addressing in our plans. So sustainability, you'll see, we certainly talk about sustainability in, in the document, but it's important to, I think there, there is a difference. I don't have the definition in front of me of sustainability. But I showed you what resiliency is, so that's our target.
I'll follow. Okay, I was just trying to think, was there, were there other things that associated that we also changed within sustainability to resiliency? Or is it just simply the term?
Right now, it's, it's the term, but I think it's, so I kind of listed a number of resiliency strategies. Not, those aren't exactly sustainability strategies per se. So why don't, why don't you see as we go through the actual goals and policies, if, if we need further explanation? I can think of a few things, but I'm thinking it will all make sense once we get into more of the substance. Okay.
I guess I'll just say, and this is not a fully informed, my, my impression of the two terms is that sustainability is not consuming resources that will not, that are not able to be replenished. So renewables and kind of operating in a way that you could continue to operate in that way for a long time. Resiliency, I think, is kind of a bummer that we're having to look to that. It is acknowledging that there is a storm coming and that we need to take actions to kind of protect our, protect our city, protect our people, protect our businesses from some of the climate-related risks, heat and flooding and all, the whole list of it. So it's kind of a bummer of a change, I think, but that's just my impression of it, not. Yeah.
So, so one, so I'll use an example. So sea level rise. We need to, as a community, certainly along the shorelines, be ready to reduce the negative impacts of that. And so obviously we need to build up higher or further away from the water's edge. And so, so we're trying to be resilient so that we can be sustainable. So the building that we've built, we took it into account so it can last longer. So you could think of sustainability in that instance is that the building will survive, won't have to be moved, so it's sustainable. Does, if that makes sense to you. But we can, at our next meeting, I can have a definition of sustainable if we need to revisit that.
I don't want to go backwards. I just wondered if there was, I think I.
And I don't think we changed our, it, it does not come with a significant change in emphasis. I think there's enough overlap between the two that, but there is more of an, of an awareness of the hazards side of it, I think. So it's more adding than subtracting.
Yeah, and we definitely did not strike out the word sustainable and substitute the word resilient. It was not a one-for-one because there are differences of how we use those words, if that helps. Okay, so next slide. We'll talk about the other sub-element that we're required to make clear in our revisions. And that deals with greenhouse gas emissions, so goals and policies addressing that. And a number of years ago, back in 2011, the city issued a document about municipal operations. So just what the city, the roads, the sewer treatment plant, the water treatment plant, and then analyzed that the carbon contributions. So it's called a carbon wedge analysis. And we did that in 2011. And then in 2016 through 2017, we had a consultant help us do a carbon wedge analysis for the whole community. And so that established a base year of 2014 of our carbon emissions. And so now there is a, a goal in our climate action plan of a 50% reduction in that number by the year 2030, which is not too far in our future. So next slide, please. So just a few little graphs to sort of help us all understand, well, what does that mean? Sort of the carbon wedge analysis. So the vertical axis is, are the greenhouse gas emissions. And then the horizontal axis is the year. And there's a dashed line indicating where we're at, 2024. So there is also a red horizontal line that's showing greenhouse gas emissions to avoid. So the delta between those two lines right now, I don't think has been calculated. We haven't measured, how are we doing? And then the greenhouse gas emissions that we need to reduce in order to actually make this goal, all of this will be part of implementing, once we have these policies, doing more analyses. So the next slide shows some of the factors that we know we are having to address and will address. So starting at the top, the top three categories, so the purple and the two blues, deal are, are talking about federal and state requirements that the city is already complying with. And so that is reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. Then you'll see, starting with the triangle that is called 40% cleaner fuels in vehicles, and then 25% reduced vehicle miles traveled, 30% reduction of natural gas use for heating. Natural gas does produce carbon. So those were sort of the three categories that our consultant recommended with our carbon wedge analysis of strategies that the city should be targeting to help us meet this goal of 50% reduction.
So did you, so you said we haven't gone back and measured anything? Is there, was there something in the action plan? Wasn't there a way to go in and measure how we're doing along the way? And are we doing that or why are we not if we're not?
We're, we're working on it. But I don't, do you?
I'm not sure where we're at with updated inventories. Those are very hard to do. There's a lot of work going on all around us in the climate arena. We've definitely have done monitoring of the actions that we are supposed to take. So I think once a year, we go down this entire list and check in with the responsible departments and parties to, to track the performance of the climate action plan and, and how we're making progress towards it. As to the actual results, I'm not sure if we have a, an expectation to do another inventory and how well it can connect to the previous one. With House Bill 1181, there is a ton of work for the Department of Commerce to do. So 1181 is the climate element bill in the legislature in 2023. And it included a new requirement for climate change and resiliency element. The, the city already has that in our comprehensive plan. And we also have the climate action plan, which I think satisfies a lot of the requirements, although not all of them. We're going to take some steps forward with this comprehensive plan periodic update, but recognize that there's more work to do. We have until June of 2029 to complete that work. So I think we're already have a lot of progress in hand with earlier work that's done. We'll move it forward again. Staff was thinking it didn't make sense to get all the way to the finish line on that, both with the capacity with the rest of the work that we're doing in the periodic update, but also the, the really huge amount of work that Department of Commerce and others are doing to establish benchmarks, inventories, guidance on how to measure carbon and VMT, because there are some numeric reductions. And so I think it just makes sense for us to, to participate in that regional and state framework rather than create something on our own just to be a couple of months faster than that. So everything we're doing today and this year, I think, is going to be another strong step forward, but not all the way to where we need to be to meet the requirements of the state legislature. So updates on the inventory since, well, this plan was adopted in 2020. I, I don't think we've done that. There, there's been some work for Snohomish County as a whole and Washington State that give us some indications of how things are going. Of course, the pandemic threw everything into a lurch since the climate action plan was adopted. But we'll, I'll, we'll try to get some of that information for your next meeting on what the thinking is.
Okay, next slide. So in updating this element, what we have completed reviewing and are incorporating is looking at what our requirements are from the state level as well as regional and countywide. And then our local goals and policies that are already in our element and the climate action plan. There is also a progress report that I know is included in your packet when you were briefed on this last fall. So if you want to look in there. I was looking for numbers in terms of the inventory. And the, the big, biggest report was on reductions of energy uses for the city's water pollution control facility. That, that was a strategic program. So, so then, next steps, and we're going to be hearing about that.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes.
You said there was a progress report contained where?
Let me find.
We, one thing I didn't mention when I, when we went through all of the elements is that we've already brought most of these elements to you last year in a very informational sense on here's what the context is around it. I think with climate change, it was October.
Okay.
And so I think Karen said as part of that packet, we have the update.
Yeah, you should have gotten a memo from Allison and myself dated June 14th. So there are links to the document. And so in terms of the progress report, that, that was part of that meeting because I reviewed to see what you'd been presented. So there is some information specific to Everett and how we're doing reducing our carbon footprint.
So to get to it between now and the next meeting, the blue link to the October 5 packet in your current climate change memo will get you to there. Or you can go to the Planning Commission webpage and look at the, but again, that October 3rd or 5th?
Third.
October 3rd, 2023.
Thank you. Thank you. That's very helpful. Appreciate it.
Okay, so, next steps are looking at our current goals and policies for this particular topic, and trying to figure out where they should go within the comprehensive plan. And so, using the term crosswalk, so crosswalking across the different elements, and then coming back with a revised draft for you to consider is, are the next steps.
And the next steps start now, I think. So, what we've got is just a Word document here, and it is the same one that we've handed out to you. So, there is the goal, a goal, a table of goals that result in proposed goals for our climate element. And then, there are a proposed full set of goals and policies and actions that would be the climate element. And you'll notice that quite a few of the goals and policies have a different prefix than CC or CCR, meaning that those would be goals and policies that will actually live in a different element. This is the process and kind of approach that we're planning to take for all of these elements, so we're testing it out here. Starts with the vision statement. The next step is to look at the goals that are consistent with that vision, and then to, to develop a set of implementing policies. So, let's start with the goals here. House Bill 1181, so we look first, do a scan above left and right for relevant goals that we're required to implement, be consistent with, and whatnot. So, the Growth Management Act with 1181 has a new goal related to climate change, and that reads, "Climate: Ensure that comprehensive plans, development regulations, and regional policies, plans, and strategies under the countywide planning policies chapter and the regional transportation planning organization chapter, adapt to and mitigate the effects of a changing climate, support reductions in greenhouse gas emissions and per capita vehicle miles traveled, prepare for climate impact scenarios, foster resiliency to climate impacts and natural hazards, protect and enhance environmental, economic, and human health and safety, and advance environmental justice." So, this is the overarching goal that every city and county that plans under the Growth Management Act in the state needs to be consistent with, supportive of. Vision 2050 represents the multi-county planning policies, and also is directive to the City of Everett's comprehensive plan. So, whatever we do in, in climate change goals and policies needs to be consistent with this as well. The region substantially reduces emissions of greenhouse gases that contribute to climate change in accordance with the goals of the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency, and those are 50% below 1990 levels by 2030, and 80% below 1990 levels by 2050, and prepares for climate change impacts. The, the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency objectives, I believe this is out of their strategic plan that was just adopted last year by the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency Board. I, I was pausing there because one of those goals looks a little bit different with Vision 2050, and we'll have to see which one of those, because Vision 2050 references the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency goals, but then also repeats what the goal was in 2021, I think it was, when Vision 2050 was adopted. The Puget Sound Clean Air Agency objective is 50% below 1990 levels by 2030, all consistent there, and 95% below 1990 levels by 2050. So, I will check into that. I, I, we may have increased the ambition of our, of our goal there at a state level. Both of those have a different base year than our climate action plan, 1990 instead of 2016. And then, the metrics, which inventory it's based on, all of that, very complicated, and I think we're going to need to do some really focused work to really understand that. For our purposes, as part of this periodic update, I think relying on the climate action plan's analysis and its goal statement is the right way to go. And no matter what, it is significant, relatively drastic reductions in greenhouse gas emissions, no matter how you slice it. The countywide planning policies, like the multi-county planning policies, add another layer. Our countywide planning policies, I believe, don't have a climate change chapter. The policy that I saw in that set that looked the most relevant was that the, the counties and cities within Snohomish County should support the implementation of the state's climate change initiatives, and work toward developing a common framework to analyze climate change impacts when conducting environmental review under SEPA. Not quite as hard hitting as the other ones. Then, we've got the climate action plan. I won't go through all of those. And then, we have our existing comprehensive plan goals. You can take a look at that for where we're at. We have 10 goals right now in the comprehensive plan. Then, I'll direct your attention to the right side, which is our proposed goals related to climate change that would be in the comprehensive plan. Not all in the climate change and resiliency element, but this is how we anticipate dealing with some of these relationships, is when we talk about climate change, we'll also talk about goals and policies that will wind up in a different element, but relate to that topic. So, same thing, if we're talking about land use and transportation, we'll, we'll try to make those connections clear. So, the first goal, you know what I'll do now, is switch to the other format, which has these exact goals, as well as the policies that go under them, and we can look at them as a, as a whole. So, this document here includes that vision statement up top that we opened the meeting with, and then it has, we're broken up into two sub-elements, greenhouse gas emissions reduction and resiliency, like Karen mentioned, coming out of state law. You'll see two call-out boxes for the multi-county planning policies that deal with emissions reduction and with resiliency. Went through an operation of reading through all of the goals, targets, strategies, and actions in the climate action plan, because that was recently adopted by the city council, presumed established policy of the city. We looked at the House Bill 1181. We looked at Vision 2050, and we made sure that every one of those concepts was addressed in this list of goals and policies that we'll go through. So, that's why you see the MPPs there with the check marks next to them. After each one of these goals and policies, most of them at least, you'll see a citation to what the source was for that goal and policy. Either RCW, CAP is Climate Action Plan, CP is our existing comprehensive plan, and which element the policy is. And we start with the goal right out of the climate action plan, that Everett's community greenhouse gas emissions decrease 50% from 2016 to 2030, and 80% from 2016 to 2050. I would like us to have as much as possible measurable goals, because that helps staff know, and users of the comprehensive plan, what we're doing. And that's the whole point of a comprehensive plan. Underneath that goal, we have a couple of policies, one about outreach to educate the community about, about measures to reduce emissions and adaptation for climate change. It's going to take a village to get this done. Prioritize greenhouse gas emissions reduction and climate change adaptation actions that benefit vulnerable communities, and maximize the benefits of reduced air pollution and environmental justice. And this relates to some requirements out of the new climate bill. And then, balance the cost of actions and strategies for reducing greenhouse gas emissions with the cost of inaction. And that is a policy that's in our existing comprehensive Maybe I'll pause at each goal and set of policies to see if there are any thoughts, and maybe for this first one, we can think about the, the approach overall. This could be the time for wordsmithing. This could be the time for general, general observations. This could be the time for questions and more information for us to bring back at the next meeting. And I realize this is new, new to you. We've been working furiously at this. Like I said, it's tough to get these pulled together in two weeks, when we've got a lot of other things going on here. So, apologize for the late arrival of this information, and totally understand if you want to chew on it, and we can have a little bit more of a robust conversation at the next meeting. Wanted to at least give the opportunity to explain some of this first.
Just one, one thought. The, providing ongoing public outreach to educate the community and build support for measures to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and adapt to the impacts of climate change. I think the community is not aware of what creates the greenhouse gas emissions to a large degree, so maybe to add in the component of educating the community on what is producing the greenhouse gas emissions, and helping to build support for measures to reduce. Because I think it's a conversation that often falls on deaf ears when you say, well, we need to reduce, we need to reduce it, here's how we reduce it. And there are folks that are like, I don't even know what you're talking about, what is even creating it, what are, reduce it for what? So, maybe expand that to helping folks understand the issue more holistically.
I'll keep moving. We can always, we can always come back once you've seen everything. So, the next set of policies are definitely related to the first goal of overall reducing emissions. These are a set of policies that connect to transportation. This, like many of these others, these policies could live in climate change element. I think we have similar policies right now in our climate change and sustainability element. They could be in the transportation element. We're thinking with these, you're more likely to have all of the transportation policies in one place when you're deciding how to prioritize your investments, or design a facility or something. So, we're thinking that the best home for these policies ultimately would be in transportation. We have policies and goals in progress. We're working with a, a city team and some consultants on this. Things like prioritize, incentivize, and promote transportation by wa- walking, biking, and transit is certainly already in there, and so, we would not necessarily repeat this. This is just, we want to make sure that this concept makes it into the transportation element. If, and we don't want to add any more policies than we need. We don't want to be redundant. So, if it's worded better out of that other element, and we'll see when we get to the transportation chapter in October, we would not overlay this on top of it.
So, I appreciate you saying that you're trying to figure out how to make it measurable, which, which is a great thing to say. I know how, it's very, very difficult to do.
Yes.
But, um, like, how, so how, how, when you're looking at this, how are you looking at that, then measuring it? So, if you look like partner with school districts to encourage walking and biking, I mean, how are you setting that up in a policy that's, that you can go back and look in a period of time and measure?
Yeah.
Or your concept in, in that you would pull this off?
Right. I was thinking mainly that, that the goals and, and a subset would be measurable. The more that we can have measurable, the more that we'll have clear direction. You can see, sorry, on the top one, and I didn't mention that, per capita V, vehicle miles traveled by evident Everett residents and employees decrease blank by blank. We don't have those numbers yet. I think we would, for this one, we would need to see what our travel model shows, that maybe business as usual results in X VMT, and then we would look at what sorts of actions would have a reasonable chance at reducing that. And, like mode split goals, which I'm not sure if we have in our existing comprehensive plan, but those are, I think, called for in some other, maybe, multi-county planning policies or something. We want to look at what those numbers mean, and know what we're getting into, not just produced by 50%. And, and then we find out that that's either really difficult or impossible, or maybe even not where we want to go. So, I think more work in, on that vehicle miles traveled one would come from the travel model, and from some of the analysis that's going to come in the transportation element. For partner with school districts to encourage walking and biking, I think it would be fantastic to gather data on how many students, staff, and faculty do walk and bike to work. And I think there, you could either do a sample, or maybe that's data that some schools already collect. I wouldn't want to have a measurable objective without knowing where we're starting from. So, let's say, currently, 10% of students and 20% of faculty and staff walk and bike and bus to work. And then, what's a reasonable goal for that in a 20-year period that would have some relationship to things that we can control? So, what is a reasonable expectation based on education programs, adding sidewalk links where they're missing, and maybe encouraging the school districts to price parking for their staff, or something like that is pretty effective measures? What would that get us, and?
So, where would that, so, perfect, how you would do that, or how I would think that would be done. But then, where does that, what you just talked about, where does that fit into the comprehensive plans? You can have the, you have a goal, explain that, you have the policy, but then the actual things that you're going to do for the, do for that, where, where do we see that?
So, the very last page of this handout is entitled, "Implementing Actions." So, conceivably, we could put, that's not listed there right now, but, and these actions we're intending for the first five years after the comprehensive plan is adopted. So, if that was a target, and we can't do everything all at once, but you can help us figure out the best priority, you know, what should, what, we need some early successes, so, find those.
Yeah, so, so the, the really major ones, I think, and, and the ones that are discrete action items will find their way into those lists of implementation actions. Others, you know, there are so many things that the city does, and there are so many things that we might do. We might review a conditional use permit application for a new school building. And those come with the potential for conditions, and staff in the land use team, when they're reviewing those permits, look to the comprehensive plan for guidance on what they should be reviewing. Maybe they're on the fence about granting a reduction in the parking, the parking ratio that the school district has requested for a specific school, and maybe they use this policy to inform that decision. Maybe it's a change in regulations. Maybe it's when we look at our parking ratio for schools. Maybe it's when our transportation team looks at where to apply safe routes to schools, resources. So, I, not everything needs to be spelled out when we adopt the plan. I think it's, it's, it's a policy of what we want to accomplish, and then we'll look for opportunities to accomplish that. Some of them will, will, will measure, or will include actions at the outset. So, on the, the goal of, of per capita vehicle miles traveled decrease, state law and multi-county planning policies say that they must. I don't believe that they say by how much. I think that's up to us, and something that, it'll take us some time to figure out where we want to wind up there. The next policy, prioritize transportation investments that support achievement of the emission reductions goals, and such as by reducing vehicle miles traveled. The next one is require all transportation projects to incorporate infrastructure for bicycles, pedestrians, and transit. That's pretty absolute. We want to allow for some reasonable expect, exceptions. We have some of that in code right now. If the, I think if the sidewalk would be ineffective, would create a safety hazard, some other ones. I think it'd be great to spell some of that out in policy now, and then that'll flow its way into code, and then into administration of, let's see, this one is about transportation projects. We already have a complete streets ordinance, and I think are fairly strong on that already. There's another similar policy later about land use development projects, and we talked about frontage improvements with middle housing, and that's where that kind of a policy, what is, when would you require? when would you require a sidewalk to be built as part of a development, and when might you not? Cost effectiveness, of course, safety, and, and just if it's at the end of a dead end, then maybe it doesn't make sense to spend the money. Then reduce vehicle commute trips, and then partner with school districts to encourage walking and biking. So these policies are all, serve the purpose of decreasing vehicle miles traveled, which itself serves the purpose of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And we would, when we get to the transportation element, we would look to have those in there, possibly with some changes. Other than reducing vehicle miles traveled, can also transition our broader vehicle fleet to zero emissions, whether that's electrical, electric vehicles or otherwise. Again, if we can get to a measurable goal, that would be fantastic. If it is, it's very possible that that would be elusive, that it just doesn't, doesn't make sense. I know the state has goals and targets, so where they do, we can kind of look at whatever its proportion of that would be and decide if we want to go stronger than the state requirement, or maybe just even with it. It may turn out that, that we just, best we can do at this point is to say more rather than a specific percent. To do that, we would create a robust electric vehicle charging station network. I've got a note on there that that includes both public and private, so in the public right of way or as part of private development. How do we do that? That can include incentives. That can include requirements for development to be E V ready or include E V charging. The state has some requirements already for larger buildings. I believe we have policies around city infrastructure, lots of grant programs out there to install it in the right of way for folks who don't have the ability to charge electric vehicles at home. And on the last page, we have, it's a limited set of actions because these are things that we're actually going to do in the next five years. But one of them is to create an electric vehicle charging station action plan, and that's an action that comes out of the climate action plan already. Because it's a complicated, electricity and charging stations are complicated. So those would be some transportation goals and policies that we would reflect in that element. Now there's a policy around, a goal around clean energy production in Everett. And where that comes from is a multi-county planning policy, C C three, reduce greenhouse gases by expanding the use of conservation and alternative energy sources. We reworded that just a little bit. It seems less about using the energy sources than actual clean energy production. Clean energy production, I think, would for the most part be solar, although there can be some small wind and geothermal projects. So again, if we can get to a goal of some number of megawatts or some percent increase or something like that, that would be fantastic. If we can't, then we'll stick with the direction that we're trying to go. And how do we do that? We support the installation of energy production systems. We pursue development of energy management technology. That would be things like smart meters that reduce the need for the energy in the first place, or time it to when it is more efficient. And then recruit and support green business and industry, which would support some of that energy production. All of these are related to, we didn't, I think, write any brand new policies, just so you know. All of these came from the multi-county planning policies, the climate action plan, or the existing comprehensive plan with some wording tweaks. We did combine and delete a fair amount of policies with the overarching goal of slimming this whole plan down quite substantially. Handy desk reference. Okay, so that is on producing energy and then building energy reduction. And you see with this, with the residential, commercial industry, I think this will take some, some work and care to make sure that we're, we don't just want to reduce building energy use because that might mean avoiding certain kinds of businesses or industries because they use a lot of energy. If they're going to have to use a lot of energy somewhere and it's beneficial to be in Everett, I don't think we want to necessarily discourage that. But we do want to encourage and take the steps to make our overall systems more efficient and for a given, whether it's per capita or per unit of economic output or something like that, we want to in general, I mean, it's easier to say reduce building energy use than to get really specific with it. So that's why we've got some of the kind of nuances in there. But ultimately transitioning buildings to lower no carbon energy sources and better efficiency. We would use incentives. We would help owners retrofit buildings. We would support the state's goal. I have a question. I'm not familiar with what that state goal is exactly. This one comes out of our existing comprehensive plan. Maybe that goal has been replaced now by something else. Disincentivize natural gas. I will note that there's a little bit of a range of how natural gas in buildings is handled in the climate action plan. There's a goal of eliminating it, but then the policies are more like disincentivize or even study options to disincentivize. I think where we're, where we're at right now as a recommendation is to take that middle ground of disincentivizing it, but recognizing that that transition period is going to be, is going to have to be done carefully to not incur excess costs. Promote the adaptive reuse of existing buildings. Require land use projects. That's the other one that I mentioned, to incorporate infrastructure for bicycles, pedestrians, and transit unless, what? Require and encourage green roofs, green walls, cool roofs, cool pavement, and landscaping that is tolerant to a range of climate conditions. All of those sound cool. Any thoughts on these ones? And if anybody wants to take a shot at what would be reasonable exceptions for bike, ped, and transit infrastructure too? I think we'll chat with our public works colleagues and transportation consultant on that. Look to what we have existing on the books as well. Yeah.
One thought is, it's mentioned as a policy option to help owners retrofit buildings for energy conservation and use of new technologies such as solar. And then above that, one of the policy recommendations is support installation of energy production systems in Everett, including solar, wind, and geothermal. So I, I think it's interesting that it's help owners of buildings retrofit. We have a lot of homeowners, a lot of residential owners. Will there also be thought to extending programs to help? I mean, we can just generally say we support this, but it's interesting that it specifically says help the owners of the buildings. Will there also be policies that help homeowners implement those types of
And I think
Energy production systems.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we could review that to make sure that it's, that it is applicable to homeowners as well. This one, I think it mentions the M P P, but it is also one that comes out of our existing comprehensive plan. Looking for the word help. There's a lot of them in here. Anyways, it comes from existing language, but yeah, we'll review that to make sure applicable to homeowners as well. Any other thoughts on building energy? We've got some focused on the city's operations. Oops, that's 2016, isn't it? Municipal greenhouse gas emissions decrease 50% from 2016 to 2030 and to net zero by 2050. And then some policies the city will lead by example. We'll incorporate strategies for electricity storage in new and existing buildings owned, leased, or controlled by the city. We'll transition the city's municipal vehicle fleet and equipment to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and emphasize green stormwater infrastructure and low carbon materials when designing and building city infrastructure. And that was it for emission reductions. So for that sub-element, does that feel like we've captured? And again, take some time in the next month to kind of look at these three. I would say the exist, the climate action plan, the existing comprehensive plan element. And yeah, what does that seem like? It kind of covers the major issues and, alright, fair enough. Resilience. I will say that one thing that was very helpful to me out of the climate action plan is the the list and listing that starts on page 13. It's a sobering list of expected climate impacts in the coming years. The average year during mid-century is projected to be four to five and a half degrees warmer in Snohomish County. Heat waves, of course, increase in intensity, fewer cold nights, more likelihood of droughts and wildfire, increased likelihood of heat stress and heat-related deaths. Heat is the leading cause of death from weather in the United States, maybe worldwide as well. Sea level rise by 2050 between half a foot to two and a half feet of sea level rise. So we're incorporating that into our development review and floodplain regulations already. Wetter conditions in the spring, fall, and winter. So that is eight to 10% higher precipitation in those months in the 2050s compared to 1970 to 1999. Summers drier and warmer, 8% less from an already pretty paltry amount in the, in the summer. less. Lower summer flows on our rivers and stress for our water supply and especially our fish. Flood risk increasing in the future. Heavy rainfalls may intensify by 22% by the 2080s. And then coastal flooding as well. Human health impacts, heat-related mortality projected to increase, mosquitoes, fire risk, asthma, and economic impacts. This is not the cheeriest chapter. This is why we're doing all of the difficult work that was in the first half of the climate change element to try to reduce these impacts. But I think part of the bummer of moving from sustainability to resiliency is that we've, I think, have a low probability of true sustainability in the near term and are shifting our focus a little bit to resilience against what is very likely to happen while at the same time trying to reduce that, those impacts. So resiliency, there are some requirements in the, in the new state law. The resiliency element must identify the actions that the jurisdiction will take during the planning cycle that will result in reductions in, oh, emissions. Oops, wrong section. Here we go. The resiliency sub-element must equitably enhance resiliency to and avoid or substantially reduce the adverse impacts of climate change in human communities and ecological systems. Best available science and scientifically credible climate projections. I think that's what we just went through here. so we've got a couple of goals here. Everett is prepared for and resilient to impacts and hazards related to climate change. A couple of policies on transportation system. Coordinated planning for system recovery in the event of a shock to the system. Address rising seawater by sit, citing and planning for relocation of hazardous industries and essential public services away from the 500-year floodplain. Protect and expand the city's tree canopy, both to reduce energy use and mitigate the heat stress. Plant tree species or varieties known to have a broad range of environmental tolerances and promote native plants to provide habitat. Protect and restore natural resources that sequester and store carbon, including critical areas, forested areas, buffers, and private forested areas. Consider the potential impacts of climate change in fisheries protection on the region's water supply. Oops, I've taken that right from the city's water supply, although we do provide water to a sub-region. Encourage emerging, encourage established and emerging industries, technologies, and services that promote sustainability. Encourage landscape design and maintenance and agriculture that reduces water, pesticide, herbicide, and fertilizer use, including minimizing turf lawn areas. That's the first set of resilience. I will note we have a hazard mitigation plan that adds a lot of detail to some of these, some of these hazards. Was just adopted a couple of weeks ago, I think. Here's a goal and a policy that would be in the, what is E A I?
Engagement.
Engagement, administration, and implementation element that make sure that folks are engaged in the decision-making around climate change and the actions. And then we're coordinate with the state and others to incorporate analysis of emissions and impacts into state environmental policy act reviews. And then there's a significant focus on environmental justice and reducing the disproportionate pollution burden that have accumulated on some vulnerable communities, communities of color, low-income communities, and others that kind of bear the brunt of pollution as well as climate impacts. And these are some of the neighborhoods most exposed to heat stress. Not climate, but the local air pollution, diesel particulates, and all of those sorts of things. So there's a real focus in our equity work, both generated locally in the city as well as in Vision 2050 and in state law, that both the disproportionate impacts are reduced disproportionately well and that the side benefits from emissions reductions such as reduced local air pollution, safer streets, tree canopy and all of that flow disproportionately to these vulnerables and highly impacted communities to help redress some of the past inequities in that area, very timely with tomorrow's holiday. So vulnerable communities benefit from greenhouse gas emission reduction actions, including improved local air quality and safer streets. And then some policies around strengthening community partnerships, identifying where heat island effects will be greatest, targeting them for additional tree planting, encouraging community gardens, community-supported agriculture and farmers market with a priority on fresh food access in overburdened communities. And encourage the provision of community space such as commercial kitchens for use by community members and startup agricultural businesses. If folks didn't see it, there was an article this week in Herald about a, a, a lack of commercial kitchens for food trucks. And then promote eco-industrial development in which a waste stream from one firm becomes the raw material for, for another. And I have a note on that, find ways to broaden it beyond just industry for other ways to use energy efficiently, whether it's like small scale. I think of the, the, the old downtowns with steam systems for building heat, I think are very efficient. You have to do it for a whole cluster. Model code partnership work around the light rail communities, thinking that maybe some of these areas see a lot of development and may benefit from district energy and district stormwater approaches. So I'd like to bring this, not just industry. What was it Karen was, was telling me about the Kimberly-Clark Mill that used to produce a lot of waste heat that would heat a couple blocks of homes and businesses, till that sort of a thing. And that's it there. And then last are implementing actions. And then last are implementing actions. Shortlist, yes?
Before we move on to that, I, I didn't see anything about erosion, like soil erosion. Like I was thinking specifically about the Valley View neighborhood and the Woods Creek issue and the community concern around erosion, soil erosion. I mean, we don't have the, the same types of like mudslide issues that they have in other areas of the county, but there are areas where erosion might be a concern and how are we addressing it?
So erosion, liquefaction, steep slopes, all of those are categorized as critical areas under the Growth Management Act. And so that will be in the, our current policies right now are in the land use element. So with the new urban form, the, the policy basis will be there in terms of public safety and property safety. The hazard mitigation plan, which is referenced here, that addresses different strategies to keep people and properties safe. One of the things we've been talking about is perhaps updating our mapping information for not so much erosion, but landslide potential.
With our, our goal of trying to be cross-cutting with these, I think it would be appropriate to mention in some way those, I think, the whole list of critical areas, which will have policies in the urban form element, as Karen mentioned, but maybe we can at least have one that says, consider climate impacts in critical area protections and regulations. Thank you.
Have we identified the areas in the city with, that are considered heat islands or heat deserts?
I don't, not formally. We do have maps in the, in the environmental impact statement to be released that show where there is not tree cover. And I think there's some maps showing where in the heat dome, there are some satellite images that show what land got the hottest. So I think we could portray where, which areas have more concrete and tend to trap the heat more. I don't think we have a designation for heat risk zone.
And do we have, and do we have a planting plan? Do we, have we got areas where the city's actually out planting trees or trying to create canopy?
Yeah, I don't, I need to check in with our parks department on our tree canopy work. They, of course, maintain our parks and I think they support some of the street tree program along with public works. They may have a plan, it may be more opportunistic or just a regular program, but that's the kind of thing that these policies would inform. Yeah. I'll learn some more about that before the next meeting. Okay. And then actions, so these are intended to be discrete actions. You know when you're done with it. It needs to be achievable for the city in five years. With the new Growth Management Act requirements for comprehensive planning, there's going to be an implementation progress report due to the Department of Commerce in five years. So we're going to have to show the progress that we've made. So that's our, we want these to be significant actions, discrete actions, and achievable actions. So we've got create an electric vehicle charging station action plan. Finish the job with the climate change and resiliency element because there are some things that aren't fully up to snuff with the 1181. Everett Transit has been on a, on a tear with electrification, and I'm not sure exactly what their goal is, but we'll reflect that there. Haven't had a chance to check in with Transit yet. And then the electrification action plan for the rest of the city facilities. So those would be the things that we would get to work on in the late 2020s. And we would plan to bring this back for progress reports, planning commission and council each year, and maybe we change what's on the list. Maybe we add things and cross them off when we're done. So other than, we would add text and explanation and maps and charts, a limited amount, but this would be your climate change and resiliency element for the most part.
So I'm sorry, these four implementing actions are what you're proposing or you're asking to have other input or?
Well, we're happy to take input, but this is our initial proposal for, for climate change-related actions.
I would suggest that reduction of parking requirements is also a climate change action. And, and so that's kind of what I, what I was getting at when I was saying it's, it would be helpful to educate the community as to the sources of greenhouse gas emissions because many folks don't know. And so they don't see so much value in some of the proposals and the discussions that we've had around reducing parking minimum requirements, but it is directly connected to climate change action.
So I could see that being a policy and something that would, I think the housing action plan already has us looking at that. That's something that we could have a policy that says minimize minimum parking requirements and then implement it along with the periodic update immediately. Maybe we do some work now and then have an implementing action. Maybe that's best in the transportation element or the urban form element that's, that says, especially if there's a need for significant study or analytical resources brought to it that we're not going to be able to pull off this year. That's where those sorts of things that we know we want to do, where we just don't have the capacity to do it this year, is where that would wind up. So I, we, let's, I'll, I'll make a note of that for some of these other elements and we can see what we can accomplish this year and then what's appropriate to put on the books in the coming years.
Follow on that. Follow on to that. I mean, I think it would fit under encouraging people to use other sources of transportation, certainly by reducing parking spaces. But, I mean, if you're looking for a list or for, for my input, I mean, I think the, the retrofitting of the houses, I think could be huge. I mean, well, there's, the houses we're building now are so efficient. I mean, continuing to make them more efficient is just so smallly incremental beneficial. We really need to go back and, you know, do the, get the houses that were built prior to the modern energy code, which was probably maybe 10, 12 years ago. Those, you know, it's very expensive and, but it would have the greatest effect to make those houses more efficient. And I'd love to see the tree canopy and the heat islands and have a policy where we're actually going out there. And I think it'd be something that'd be very easy to measure and understand the tree canopy and for the, have a policy and planting plan to go out there and take care of those areas.
Thank you. Just the feedback we need.
So
I mean, it's terrible.
Wow.
Yeah, it's terrible.
Okay. From all the way back here. So it seems that in the implementing actions, there's a lot of effort around mobile point source pollution and not around like single point source pollution, right? So like the, I don't know, stuff that's not movable and exists for a very long time. And I think as a, as a government that provides guidance when you're building those things, not having any actions along those lines, when your, you know, your goal is to get to net zero by 2031 or to, you know, incentivize not using natural gas or something along those lines, to take what, I mean, honestly, we don't control emission standards for vehicles, right? We don't control emission standards for trucks, for, for heavy boats, those, those kind of things. That's way outside of scope. I mean, it's nice and it'll help, it's hugely impactful, but if we can say, hey, you know, we're gonna by 2031, no new natural gas, or 2031 says, or whatever, you know, our building envelopes need to be X percent efficient and you have to have, you know, X solar or similar, that's stuff that we can do and we can give a long ramp, right? It doesn't have to be tomorrow. And I understand it's going to increase costs for, for builders and whatnot, but that will, over the lifetime of the building, greatly reduce their, you know, cradle to grave for, for CO2 emissions and similar.
So for point sources, which I think of as, I guess it's, it could be the heating systems for a larger building, it could be industry itself. Would we want to discourage carbon-intensive industry in Everett?
I don't know if I would go that far because I think you could also go, especially, well, depending on how things go election-wise, you know, you can credit or carbon credit, et cetera, you know, don't discourage that, but if there's a way that says, hey, you know, I want to build a steel smith in, in Everett, but I'm going to do it based on solar or, you know, small nuclear or whatever, because you have piles of money. Something along those lines, right? Like they offset that massive carbon consumption in some fashion and see if you can get it maybe positive, neutral would be nice, but you know, along those lines.
Okay. Yeah, we'll see if we can work up something for your review. Yeah, it's hard to, there's so much going on at the state and federal level that we are, we're one little piece in it. There are definitely some real significant things that we can do, but there's no getting around that we're operating within a system that's outside of our control.
We can plant trees?
Yes, we can.
We can plant trees.
Plant trees.
We can plant trees in what would have been a parking spot.
Did I hear it, I don't know, a couple council meetings ago, that we actually got a grant to plant trees? Did anybody catch that at a council meeting or am I misremembering something?
You're probably right.
No?
Okay. I'll ask about that. Yeah, on the angles on tree canopy, I think we can, we did get a grant to study, build our trees.
Study.
Yeah, so know what we have and where we have it, which is important. That's the first step to making, because it's not just having trees, but they need to be healthy trees and maintained and everything. There is our landscaping code, direct connection to whatever these policies are, how much and what is in it. And we require, for instance, most development requires street trees. If you do frontage improvement with 30 feet on center, there's reviewing those, those types of things. There's exceptions for having to do it and you could minimize or address some of those exceptions to the street trees. There's city planting and how we manage our park system. And then there can be some requirements on just private property and tree removal. There's plenty of examples from around the region on different ordinances around there. There. Great.
On, earlier we were talking about sidewalks, this is a little bit of a detour right now. And sometimes, like if it's no longer safe to build one, there are reasons why you might not want to do that. Do we factor in like wetlands and like natural reasons? Is that also calculated into that? And could people like leverage that in a way that we wouldn't want them to necessarily like exploit that, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, we do. I think it's, I'll have to look at, I, I can visualize, there's at least one where there's an existing road and they might've had to build frontage improvements or sidewalks, but it was just right up against a wetland and that wound up being an exception. I can't, I can't remember exactly what piece of code we used for that, but that is a factor and a reasonable one. But yeah, it's, the sidewalk is a couple of feet and the rest of the road was many more feet. And so, yeah, there is provisions for that and we can look at those.
And there's general provisions to prevent that from being exploited by somebody who doesn't want to build a sidewalk.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, it's up to the city to administer. And so the more policy language we have to describe what, sorry, what was your word?
Well, I think what I'm
Exploit.
Yeah, because I'm thinking about, I was listening to what you were saying, I'm like, oh, I can, I can't remember where, but I can think of this street near me where the sidewalk has green space between the road and the sidewalk, but then it gets really narrow because there's a wetland. I totally get that, it makes sense. And then it expands back out. And then that made me think like, but what if somebody doesn't want to build a sidewalk and so then they're saying, oh, there's a wetland and I can't build one, but they totally could. So I just was thinking like, what stopgaps are there to, for the most part, make sure that's not happening?
Right.
And that's all I was thinking about.
Yep. Yeah, it would be our brave land use planning staff looking at all the factors in a development, but the more that they have the policy language to, to base it on. So, yeah, we'll think about exactly how those words go together and I'll learn a little bit more about exactly what those exceptions are. I think it's an important one.
Additional questions, commissioners? Did we complete that topic?
That's it. So I've got a couple of notes to, to think about. We'll bring this back next month. It may be a relatively short item because I think, what was the other one on there? Housing, maybe? So all the better if we can get to a level of comfort and we're not done until six months from now, but if we feel fairly comfortable now, that's great progress, I think. Thank you.
We have one last opportunity for public comment before we wrap. Do we have anyone online who wishes to comment?
No comments. Thank you.
Okay. Well, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.